Okay, I'm going to call this Village Board meeting for July 6, 2013. Do us a roll call, please.
Bill Rannow.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Sam Bolick.
Chris Sommer.
Here.
Sue Springman.
Bill Rannow.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Okay, first we've got confirmation of open meeting compliance, Julie.
I can confirm that the -- all of the mailings remain, that the agenda was publicly posted, the official notices, advice to the news reporter, and it was made available online by ESPN.
Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is consent agenda. I'll look for a motion unless somebody wants something called. Motion by Bill Rannow.
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Public comments, is there anyone here that would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening? So since I was gone last meeting, I'm just going to compliment Todd Schmidt on being recognized as our Business Person of the Year in the Village of Orange. Congratulations. Todd, do you want to mention the awards that we received also?
Oh, at the Wisconsin City Manager Conference, annual conference this past week, the village was recognized for a program, outstanding program board, the only one given out on a program to cities and estates this year in recognition of the community video that was done late last summer, the Beat Svelte video that included the original song and a lot of people. So that was recognized and they played it at the conference with a couple of people there and had a lot of very positive feedback that he means well.
I'll congratulate you on that as well, since that makes one of your brainchild with Ellen from the chamber. Any other public comments? Okay, I will just point out that for anybody who would like, during the public hearings, if you wanted to speak, it's important that you have those forms turned in to Julie up front.
Anybody else have a form?
Yes, so if you have those, please, please turn those in at this time. Can everybody in the back row hear me? If you can hear me in the back row, no?
Absolutely.
Is that better?
Yes. Any other forms?
Okay. Then we'll get started here. First public hearing item we have, discuss and take action on certified survey and rezone for Vernon Barker, 5711 River Road, Town of Westport. Kevin?
Yeah, this property is in -- this property is in the Town of Westport. Groundswell is making movement, they're also known as heritage, they've been taken out of formal name, but groundswell, they've been working with the property owners in terms of buying, shorting their properties to keep it in conservation easier. There is one buildable part of the lot that they're going to separate out from. The Joint Planning Commission and the Town Board recommend approval, and our Plan Commission has no objection.
Board, any questions?
I'd recommend we approve as recommended by the Joint Planning Commission, that included -- okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to open up the public hearing for this item, for anybody who'd like to address the board on this.
Jim Walsh from Groundswell Concerns is just here to answer questions.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Any questions from the board? Or I'd look for a motion.
Okay, make a motion, we approve as recommended by the Joint Planning Commission, that included the CSM and rezone from A-1 EX to ER1 and conservancy, condition on no further land division, no residential building on the conservancy site, and connection to utilities once available.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
Second by Joe Zitzelberger. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye. Aye, posed, ayes have it. Next public hearing item we have, discuss and take action on certified survey and rezone for Stephen and Ronald Helscher, 5511 Easy Street, Town of Westport. Kevin?
This is another property that's in the Town of Westport on Easy Street. It's an 80-inch parcel, and they're proposing to make a split for two residential lots. There were some concerns raised at the town level, really this is more than a town issue than it is a real issue. So the Joint Planning Commission took no action, so if you're welcome to hold the public hearing, but will likely have to, we publish and have another public hearing once the Plan Commission and Joint Plan Commission take action.
Okay, then I'll open up the public hearing for this item, for anybody who'd like to address us. Sounds like we'll have another one. Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. We can move on from this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Next we've got discuss and take action on rezone of 201 North Madison Street for public library.
This action that we're requesting is that the Village Board formally take action to rezone the library site from industrial to G1 institutional. Plan Commission recommend approval. Call the hearing.
Okay, so I'll open up the public hearing on this item, for anybody who'd like to address the board on it.
I do have some written -- I have a written comment, and I have people that want to speak. Do you want the written comment first?
Yes.
And this is from Sam Hoffman, 908 Turnberry Drive. I overwhelmingly support the library in this rezoning, but I would like an explanation as to why we are approving this after the groundbreaking. The Plan Commission took action on this in November and now it's July. The same thing happened with Houghton. Groundbreaking had already happened before the alley right away was vacant. In addition, even the Village Online zoning map already has the library site zoned as in secret, although it isn't. It's also interesting to note that the notice of public hearing only stated the address of the library, but the agenda item clearly states that it is the library rezone. This seems intentionally vague. Are you trying to discourage public input and cut corners? Well, I don't think that's true. That is what it looks like to the public. A simple step to solve this problem would have meant to publicly acknowledge a mistake was made, then restart the process to do it right the first time, rather than continuing to move forward. Doing something like that would have helped retain public trust of officials and village staff. Please vote yes. I have a request by Mary Heinebecker, 306 West Third Street to speak.
Mary Heinebecker, 306 West Third Street. I want to support the rezon, but I do want to comment on the procedures that were taken to get to the building of the library. First, I feel the more input should have been asked for from the public, especially after the January public input, which was held by Chris, and the amount of contentious remarks made at that meeting. I do understand that this has been in process for around 10 years, and I missed some of the requests for input as I had worked in two jobs, but it seems that there was other people that also missed those requests. One of the comments I've heard over and over at that meeting was elect the referendum and the non-meeting aspect. Second, the proper procedures have not been followed for rezoning, similar to what Sam said. How can ground have been broken before the land had been rezoned to the constitutional rules? The public's notice of tonight's rezon was also vague. Only the address was listed, 201 North Madison Street. It would be good to have more clear notices, for example, request the village rezoned old alloy plant site at 201 North Madison Street for the new library from I-1 light industrial to G1 institutional would have been more clear for people to understand what this rezon request was for. I think that evaluating the information put into public notices and making them more understandable by the public would be seen as a great service by the residents of Wannakee, also following an order that doesn't appear to be backed up to be wonderful. So, to me, the rezon should have happened months ago, not tonight, after the plant has been broken for the building to start. And as a former public in the building, I understand that it's tough to be scrutinized. I worked for the public from 1979 until I retired last year, May of 2017, but I also understand that we're paid by taxpayers, and I was paid by taxpayer until I retired, and that it's important for public employees to be top-notch on what we do. But I do support it, and I hope you vote yes for the library, even though it doesn't seem like procedures have been followed properly. Thanks for listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Anne Lee Windowski, 103 West Third Street.
I find that I'm in a bit of an uncomfortable mental situation here. I moved to Village three years ago, last month, which was a very exciting milestone for us, and I was thrilled to see that you guys were starting to stop to use an industrial brown site for such great public use. And so I 100% support the library. And when I heard that there were errors made in the noticing, I wanted to believe that it was a one-time error. But then, having just passed our three-year anniversary, and the notice having come out that the alloy plant was going to be the library, I started thinking about the number of times you guys meet every month, and it's twice a month. It's three years, I'll deduct four meetings a year, but maybe you cancel that, but 60 opportunities that were missed, and that leaves me in an uncomfortable position, trying to discern if this is a pattern of behavior or one-time error that was made. And again, I want to believe that this is a great project, and that this was a one-time error, but it's really uncomfortable trying to figure out what exactly happened. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay, then I'm going to close our public comment section in this. Board members, any comments? Force that.
I guess I'm the Village Board member on the library board. I'm excited to see what can come from this and that we're doing it.
Anyone else? So to address, I will comment, I guess, on some of the questions. I'm allowed to do that, correct?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
And Chris, if you want to, I mean, I can just, I'm not going to comment on the notices. I would say that there were some comments, some concerns about the activity on the property before it was rezoned, and I would tell you that as the owner of the property, it's two entirely separate issues. In other words, it sounds like some people would have preferred to have seen the site rezoned before work was performed on the site, but they're two separate distinct things, and the village certainly have the rights to perform the work on the property prior to any action taken with regard to rezoning the property.
Okay, thank you. So I would just comment that I don't believe anybody on this board, or the past board, ever has acted in a way that they were trying to do something to deceive the public or not put things forward the way they should be. We as elected officials rely on our staff heavily to make sure that procedures are followed as well. So I would be the person that would take responsibility if this was sloppy. As the village president, it's my job to make sure that those things don't happen. I think we referred to two different situations and that have happened, that were, I would call them sloppy, and we've moved to rectify and make sure that these types of things don't happen again. That would be really the only comments I would have in regards to that. So, any other comments from my colleagues, or is there a motion?
Well, since I'm thrilled to death we're finally going ahead with this, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezon request from Industrial 1 to G1 as recommended by the Village Plan Commission.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Okay, next item on the agenda, discuss and take action on rezon request by Main Street Wanakee LLC slash T-Wall Properties for 201, 203, 205, 207, 209, and 211 West Second Street, Wanakee, Wisconsin, from R3D Residential to C1D Downtown Commercial. Ryan, are you a cabinet contributor?
Yes, I can introduce it. So on June 7, the Plan Commission held a meeting at which a site plan and a rezoning request were considered. And just to clarify, tonight, we are only acting on the rezoning request. I'm just going to read to you the three motions that were made at the Plan Commission meeting. The first motion relates to the site plan, and so it's just background information. All motions were approved unanimously by the Plan Commission. The first one was a motion to table the site plan until the Village Board takes action on the rezon, and that was passed unanimously. The second motion was to recommend denial of the rezon to the Village Board based on its inconsistency with the comprehensive plan as stated in the village staff reports. And the third motion was that any further proposals from the applicant would need to be compliant with the comprehensive plan as it exists today. And so those last two motions are really the ones that relate to the rezoning petition. Village staff continues to support the Plan Commission's recommendations. The recommended motion in your packet is motion to deny the rezon request as it is not consistent with the village comprehensive plan, and further go on the record supporting the Plan Commission motion for no further revisions to the comprehensive plan in the C1D district at this time. I would let you know that it is a recommendation from the Plan Commission. Village staff continues to support that recommendation from the Plan Commission. There is before you an ordinance amendment. If the Village Board is implying to approve the rezoning request, then you would approve the ordinance amendment that is before you. I will also let you know that a petition under the Wisconsin statutes has been filed with the village, and the impact of the petition is for the Village Board to approve the rezoning request tonight, it would take a vote of four members to approve, as opposed to a simple majority of three, in light of the petition. And certainly if you have questions about that process, I can answer those. I think at this time that's probably sufficient information, unless you want to answer some questions on the front end before you open the public hearing.
I would assume Mr. Walsh is here? I haven't, I didn't see him when I came in. Would you like to address us first?
Check to make the mic, wait a minute, the mic's not on. It's on the back. It's on the back. Back end, right on the end.
We're going to start off with just looking at some of the plans first, and then I'm going to finish up with reviewing the comp plan and how we comply with it. So please bear with me, this will take a little time, especially since there was some dispute at the Plan Commission about whether or not our proposal complies with the comp plan, so I think it's appropriate that we go through that information. Julie, go to the next slide. So this is the proposal we have. This is actually on Second Street, specifically designed, and again, I'll also repeat what I said at the Plan Commission, there are some new Village Board members. So for those of you who may have seen some information previous to this, disregard what you saw before in the conceptual discussion, you need to look at the actual proposal that's before you now today. So we're going to speak as if we're talking to the new members of the Village Board, may not have as much information as the other prior past members of the Village Board. The Second Street has been designed specifically to look like typical two-story homes in the village. We do have units in the third, in the gables underneath the roofs, just like you have in single-family homes in the village. So we're architecturally and conceptually, when you drive down the street, this will appear exactly like single-family homes. Each of these homes is designed with different colors and different front porches, different treatments to the front facades and their gables, so they are unique, each one's unique, and they're not repeated. Next slide. This is a revised rendering of one option we are presenting to you. Two options that you could choose from for the facade on Main Street. This is the commercial-looking facade, and this ties in, looks very much like your other commercial-looking facades on Main Street. There is a two-story building with a facade similar to this directly across from the Bicycle Store property, and then across from, or next to that, there have been some single-family home residences, and we have another option to present. Do you need something, Mr. Attorney?
I was, I was going to say, I mean, I think it's appropriate for you to talk about Second Street and to give maybe some large overall discussion of your concept, but tonight's meeting is only for the rezoning, and so if, I mean, to the extent that you would get into the site plan, I think that would be inappropriate.
We're going, yes, I'm going to go through the whole proposal, everything, so this is a comprehensive review of the entire proposal, so you can see how it holds together, including the Second Street, obviously, so that is the request of rezoning.
I guess I would defer to the Village Board, I mean, my thought is that the focus of tonight's comments by everyone is related to the rezoning and not to the site plan, because there's nothing related to the site plan that is before it tonight. That being said, you always have the ability to get more information if you want to.
I'm going to give some latitude, only because I think some of the comments that are going to be stated are going to probably be in regards to the site plan as well, so I think it's only fair.
Correct me if I'm wrong, what you're trying to clarify, maybe people don't understand, is that, correct me if this is incorrect, you're trying to clarify our understanding that we're applying for rezoning for the property on Second Street, that we don't need a rezoning for the properties on Main Street. Is that an easier way to say it?
Well, I would say, I would agree with that statement, but then, just the proposal that was made to the Village incorporated a request for approval of the site plan and a request for approval of rezon, and the only action that the Village Board is taking tonight is on the request for a rezon of the properties on West Second Street. Nothing related to site plan will be acted upon by the Village Board tonight.
Okay. So we'll continue with the information, so that you have full information and make an informed decision. Go to the next slide. This is the alternative architectural design for Main Street that you can choose from in terms of its architecture. This is more of a single-family home-style architecture, again, broken into four homes with different treatments, different front facades, to make it more compatible with some of the structures directly across the street. So we tried to address concerns and issues brought up by Village Board members, Plan Commission members, and also neighbors in the area. Next slide. This is the site plan, this line here, this is the second phase, or Main Street, Main Street's up here. This is the first phase, and this will be on Second Street. We decided to switch the phase and go with Second Street building at first, so as to block the construction of the Main Street building from the residences, and this will reduce the temporary no-ways and, you know, incadences that come with construction. So be able to do it once, and then they won't be able to see the construction going on Main Street. We can certainly do it either way, but we just felt that was a better approach for the neighbors. The Bicycle Store here, we're proposing to be a parking lot available for the public to use, but specifically to address a concern of suggestion raised by Village representatives that we could, this would allow us to install a left-turn lane here on Fish Street, if the village would like that. Our entrance is in the back alley on Fish Street, going down into a garage. The entire property is parked underground. We have tremendous amount of open space, incredible courtyards. These are all things that are dressed, required in your comp plan, which is why I'm referencing them. The setbacks here are similar to some of the single-family homes. We have varied setbacks and maintain the green space courtyard there, so it doesn't look like an apartment building, it looks like single-family homes, because each one is set back a different distance from the property line. This is the parking garage. Next. This is just a typical layout of some unit types. We've not laid out the unit in the interior for you here, but we have, we do have those laid out. So there's a entrance here, secondary lobby entrance, a main lobby entrance over here. On this side, we have a lobby entrance here on Main Street, if we go with the residential look without the commercial space here, or, well, this is commercial space, but we also have a second option. If you go to the next slide, it'll show up in the, in the second option, where we would actually have on Main Street a approximately 9,000 to 10,000 square feet of a commercial tent. Both facades, both designs have commercial use on Main Street. It's just that this option, number one here, has a, alternative B, has a larger amount of commercial space on Main Street than the other option. So we are leaving it up to you to decide if you like having the larger commercial space, which we have a prospect business interested in it, or, going back to the other slide, the smaller amount of commercial space where we put in our fitness center, our yoga room, our community room, our leasing office along Main Street with that commercial use being smaller in size. Keep going. I breeze through some, please, keep going. Keep going. Keep going, keep going. So these are just different, up here, just referencing the architectural design versus that particular floor plan, if you're referencing what the key is. This is a two-dimensional elevation study of the, or was proposed buildings. It does not really give you the flavor that the three-dimensional rendering will give you. Inside the courtyard, this facade here is on the inside, where the public would see it. That's facing the swimming pool in the courtyard. Let's go back to the site plan. So to summarize that, before I go on to the comp plan, we presented you with, you go all the way back to site plan, colored the site plan. We presented you with two options. One is with more commercial space on Main Street, and one is with less commercial space on Main Street. And then another option is a very commercial-looking facade with the brick and very more flat front facade that you see on some of your old buildings on Main Street, or you can go with the architectural design that has the single-family home look appearance to it on Main Street. The appearance on Fish, West, and Second Street all have, are all the same, there's just one option, which is the option that looks like single-family homes. So now we'll just leave this slide up, so you can kind of look at it when I'm talking through the comp plan. Now, in reference to your village attorney, I won't discuss the comp plan in terms of Main Street, unless you want me to do that, but we comply with the comp plan in terms of Main Street, but we're not here for a, in terms of the Main Street, we're not asking for rezoning of Main Street, since we have a right to build on Main Street. So I'll focus my efforts on comp plan on Second Street. So the, there's a number of points here in your comp plan, and I took the words directly out of your comp plan. There was some confusion and some misinformation presented by some of the public in the last Plan Commission meeting, in which words in the comp plan and other locations of the comp plan that don't apply to this block were used and inappropriately applied to this proposal. I took the words directly out of your comp plan that applied to this specific block, this specific area. Different areas of the comp plan have different treatments, different requirements, so you can't apply requirements of a different area to this block. can't apply requirements of a different area to this block. So let's just start. First requirement is a master plan. The entire parcel to address stormwater management, street circulation, utilities, and preservation of open space. We comply with those conditions. The site is well-master-planned. It's beautifully landscaped with a courtyard, pool, grilling area, fire pit, and provides significant open space. The utilities and infrastructure are also master-planned and provided in the proposal. Stormwater management's your next requirement. We comply with your stormwater, stormwater management requirements, both onsite as well as connecting to the municipal storm sewer. There are appropriate areas shown on the exhibits in the application addressing that question. Next item is preservation of environmental corridors and greenway linkages. There are no greenway linkages in this area, but we do comply in the sense of the, let's consider the open space along Second Street. For example, we're maintaining that same open space along the street in our block. We comply with the landscape courtyard and the street trees. We also link our development to the city sidewalks, which then links to other areas of the city, excuse me, village. The next requirement is limited neighborhood commercial uses and live-work housing units within master plan, if the use does not conflict with primary use. We comply with that. There are no commercial uses proposed on Second Street, even though your comp plan does allow limited commercial uses on Second Street. So make sure you under, really understand that. We could come in here with a proposal for commercial uses on Second Street, but we've not done that. We've limited our commercial uses to Main Street. We do provide the live-work housing opportunity. People can live within the building, and they can also work within the building in the commercial space. Next item is limited offices and services may be allowed, provided use is not incompatible with adjoining residences. We comply with that. We're not proposing office uses. We are proposing an office for our leasing agent, and then our commercial use is a retail-type commercial use on Second Street. Again, this item again applies to Second Street, and we're not proposing any office use on Second Street, although a limited office use is allowed. Next item, residential developments need to be planned and developed within the overall phasing plan as delineated in Figure 8.3, requiring to provide specific phasing plan and schedule for each development. So we comply with that. We have provided you with a specific phasing plan that's been well-thought-out and changed a number of times, and it led to this specific phasing proposal before you. We also provide a schedule. The, you know, you can reference 8.3, but again, the only requirement here is that we provide these things, and we've done that. Next item is deed restrictions, protective covenants, requiring to address the site, building design, ownership, maintenance of common areas. We comply with that. We always provide deed restrictions and protective covenants. The ownership will be under our ownership for a prolonged period of time, hopefully for forever, but we'll continue. I just want to emphasize that we do a very good job with maintenance of our buildings and maintain a very first-class manner. The next item includes mixed housing types and levels of affordability. So your comp plan actually requires, requires mixed housing types and levels of affordability. So we comply with that. We have provided studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, so a mix of housing types. We also have different levels of affordability within those three categories. And what I really want to emphasize is that the actual proposal itself, in itself, provides a mix of housing types, because right now, that's all single-family homes, right? So there are no other types of housing. So your comp plan requires you, the village, to make sure that there's a provision for mixed housing types and level of affordability. That does not exist right now in your, in your, in that area. We are actually complying with that, and we're helping you meet that requirement. For you to reject this proposal, this for you then to reject and go against your own comp plan. So you've got to keep that in mind, that the development of this proposal itself helps you comply with your own comp plan. In fact, the MSA, your third-party planner review, and I quote from his letter, "The proposal would feature multiple unit sizes, including studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom units. This aspect is consistent with the plan," quote. Next item, next requirement is new residential adjoining. Existing neighborhoods should indicate, should include compatible housing proportions of parcel adjoining existing neighborhoods. So we comply with that. Our setbacks and open space are consistent with the existing neighborhood. The architecture is consistent. We provide walk-up units, which are just like the single-family homes that found in that area across the street. In fact, this actual design specifically addresses this requirement. Your own planner, your third-party planner from MSA, in his letter said, and I quote, "Architectural strategies employed in the design along all sides of the southern half of the block are excellent. They break down the amassing with variations in setback, designs, colors, materials, and ventilation." The building's setback of 20 feet, which, with porches encroaching into that setback, are only a bit closer to the street than nearby single-family homes, which are generally around 25 feet," unquote. I'll also add that, again, the setbacks vary, just like some of the single-family home setbacks vary. The next item in your plan, cluster developments in manner to preserve open space. We obviously comply with that. We provided a clustered master plan development with large landscape internal open space areas. Setbacks are similar to the other streets or to the other housing on the street, and in fact, you couldn't comply with this requirement without having a development like this. Next requirement is provide recreational amenities and association-owned common lands may include walkways, mini-parks, hotlucks, community gardens. We obviously comply with that. You can see we provided recreational amenities on common lands, grilling areas, loungers, fire pits, swimming pools, sun deck, beautifully landscaped courtyard walking paths around the development, including for dog walking. The next requirement, design to avoid double-sided lots, which have street fronts on both, both the front and backside of the lot. Obviously, we comply with that, with the design on the street front, and we're accessing from the other way. The last item, density guidelines of four units per acre redevelopment in the central part of the village are exempt. Obviously, we're in the central part of the village, where cluster development at higher density is not only encouraged, but actually required by your law. By law, you're set, that you require cluster development, master plan development of this type. So we obviously comply with that. So I won't go through the Main Street side, in which we comply, because I'm not here for rezoning of Main Street, but I'll simply conclude with that this proposal specifically complies with your comp plan. In fact, it helps you, as a village, comply with your own comp plan, and in fact, rejecting this proposal will violate your comp plan. So I want you to keep that in mind. There's a reason why this comp plan was written and passed into an ordinance and is law in your village, and you are now required to comply with it, as well as I am required to comply with it. So we have done that. We've demonstrated we comply, and open and available questions, if you have any.
Is it appropriate for me to open a public hearing, or?
Can I ask one question?
I will allow that.
Mr. Wall, I have a question that you repeatedly referencing a comprehensive plan, and I just want to make sure that I understand, I had taken a look at some of your comments and a lot of them that you've gone through now, and, and they were part of a packet that, that were provided to the village, I think, either on the date of the plan commission meeting on June 7th, or shortly before then. When I looked at your packet, the last three, it was a 20-page PDF document that I have, and the last three pages addressed the comprehensive plan. And when I looked at it, and, and I want to, I want to ask this question, because then it's going to assist me as I assist the village board, it looked to me like the, the folks who you worked with had looked at the comprehensive plan from back in 2003, and we have a comprehensive plan from 2017. And there is, I would, I will tell you this, there is a lot of carryover of the language between the two plans. One example would be, however, for example, you just referenced language saying density guidelines are four units per acre, and I don't believe that that language carried over to the community residential portion of the 2017 comprehensive plan.
So I have two responses. One, just the first one being specific to that item. The redevelopment in central district government of the village are exempt anyways, so it wouldn't apply. But specifically to your prior question in terms of the comp plan, my staff, John Hepner, looked specifically at your comp plan and your comp plan amendments that created the latest comp plan, okay? The, for this block, there were virtually very few of any changes for this block. Now, you had other changes in your latest version of the comp plan, but for this section, it was virtually the same as previously. So we did look at the latest comp plan, as well as the prior comp plan, so including this recent amendments that were made.
So just, just to be clear, that you looked, because the 27th comp plan was not amended, it was a full-blown redo of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
You guys, you guys looked at the 2017 comp plan, and so your comments are intended to address the 2017 amendment?
That is correct.
Okay.
I think what I'll do is open up public hearings at this point, and I think Julie is going to read through comments that were sent in. I will say that I tried to forward every email that I received to Julie, so she could see these. If you sent them late this afternoon, I may not have gotten to them. Just know that, but I did my best to get everything to her.
I have comments from Melissa Ziegler, 101 West Third Street. Traffic already too much and would take away from the old part of Wannakee that I have been a part of all my life. Too big, too much. Maria Pat, 1,000 Wexford Drive. I am opposed to the zoning change for the T-Wall project. The proposed project is too large for this space. Find somewhere else to put it. Lynn Hagan, 300 West Second Street. Do not approve Wall's rezon petition. Richard Saravia, 300 West Second Street. I am totally opposed to approving Wall's rezoning petition. Peter Lee Windowski, 103 West Third Street. I am against the T-Wall project. Marcus Rolke, 203 Fourth Street. I oppose the developments on the south side of Main Street. Jenny Brussetic, 204 West Second Street. Related to the T-Wall rezon, oversized, too dense, traffic congested. We are residential first. Do not approve this at all. Sarah Kepner, 105 West Second Street. This is a residential neighborhood with low noise and low traffic. Main Street is too overcrowded, and there will be a large influx of traffic on Second Street. We strongly oppose the project. Nate Cliffcorn, 101 West Third Street. Too much traffic. Build somewhere else. Connie Coats, 210 South Street. Too much auto traffic. Bad enough with church and schools. This part of town is your historical neighborhood. Would be a shame to interfere with it. This town needs stores and reasons for people to want to be here. Charm of town to be gone with tall, ugly buildings with ungodly rents. John Moran, 215 West Main Street. I am opposed to the proposed T-Wall project. Philip Bernhard, 505 Rupert Road. I am opposed to this building on Main Street. I'm okay with it on edge of town, Kilkenny area, or north of golf course. Joanne Buchanan Rounds, 104 West Second Street. The only Wannakee in the world has a unique variety of homes built over many years. I live in one on Second Street and have always been blessed by helpful and friendly neighbors. This probably would be changed drastically with a monster building, and I ask you not to let it happen, and do not change the zoning laws. Mention the Packer House, other places, and people think Wannakee. Please don't throw away our history and heritage like many other cities, towns have done. Whitney Pollard, 1,002 Stanford Drive. I would like to oppose the T-Wall building. Elaine Loffenberg, 301 West Main. Oppose rezoning of Second Street homes for T-Wall building, and oppose Main Street building. Carrie Arneson, 923 Lexington, 217 West Main. I oppose the rezon because it is inconsistent with our comp plan ordinances. Julie and Bruce Kaufman. I am firmly opposed to the rezoning. I want to keep the small-town historic charm for the downtown area. Garian Lisa D., 907 Turnberry Drive. I am opposed. A.J. Bean, 816 North Meadowbrook Lane. I am opposed. Sandy Remish Kaufman, 1812 Dewberry Drive, Madison. Born at 309 West Main Street and lived there for 17 years. Huge apartments are not needed and lower values of homes on Second Street. It's impossible now to cross Main Street. Last thing needed are more cars in that congested area. Kathleen Keywood, 7 Fairview Trail. Homeownership is a much better position for sustaining the vibrancy of the village. The proposed location of a large apartment complex with drastically overload and already busy street, there are many elderly and youngsters walking or riding bikes in the area. Richard Schmitz, 207 West Main Street. Entirely too large. T-Wall Enterprises rezon. I vote no to this project. Connie Cottner, 10 Fairview Trail. I am against the rezoning request to build a large apartment complex on Main, West, and Second Street. It will make the traffic problem even worse on Main and West Street. I only live a block away. Timothy Clark, 308 Raymond Road. No, it should not be changed. It should be left as is. The taxes for everyone else would go up if changed. Dennis Riedelbaum, 308 Raymond Road. I vote no on the proposed building at Second Street. Just too big for this area. John Webster, 204 West Third Street. Opposed to T-Wall rezon. Wanda Buckingham, 311 West Second. Again, why so big? This is a residential neighborhood, not commercial. Please drive down Second Street and look. This is not a commercial area. It is a neighborhood. There are green space, et cetera, that would be lost. I am concerned about the extra traffic and the lack of access to Main Street, the excess water, electricity with the extra population on an old residential neighborhood, not commercial. Again, why so big? Keep the alley. Keep, as a small neighborhood, design residential. Sam Kaufman, 908 Turnberry Drive. I am opposed. I've heard it said by both developer and others that the proposed development will attract young people back to Wannakee. However, that statement is inaccurate. I am a columnist with the Wannakee High School's newspaper, The Purple Sage. Paper staff put an editorial regarding the T-Wall project in our February edition. The editorial notes that the buildings will not attract our youth, nor do the youth in the community support the project. I feel that it is important for the board to hear the perspective of young community members before making the rezoning decision. Here is an excerpt of our editorial titled Downtown Apartment Proposal Accentuates Gentrification and Hurts Small Business. Downtown Wannakee is just as historic as any other village or town in the area, yet the abundance of historic buildings in our historic downtown seems to be rapidly diminishing. In addition to this trend, the availability of affordable housing in our increasingly gentrified village is vanishing before our eyes. This trend is only accentuated by the recent T-Wall proposal to redevelop the downtown block containing the Packer House, as well as the historic and white building. Not only would this proposal eliminate historic buildings that form a principal part of the downtown area, but it would also replace these buildings with yet another high-rent apartment complex. This project would knock down multiple small businesses and would make no efforts to replace the retail space that these businesses inhabit. As a result, these businesses would be forced to find most likely more expensive new rent retail spaces or close permanently. Pushing out small businesses is only one of the many fatal flaws with the T-Wall plan. The proposed apartment complex will be composed mostly of apartments aimed at high-income tenants, which will in effect accentuate Wannakee's reputation as a homogeneous, rich, white community. It should be the goal of developers to bring diversity to our community and to make it accessible to people of all backgrounds. This new proposed apartment complex does just the opposite. There are simple alternatives to Terrence Wall's attempt to quash small businesses and further gentrify Wannakee. Primarily, they could include affordable retail space in their proposed complex to ensure that- ensure that the small businesses that they evict can continue to exist. In addition, it would be a great idea to find a way to include the already existing historical buildings in the new construction. Finally, and most importantly, this developer should make an effort to bring affordable housing to Wanakee. Although it may not bring them the eight-figure revenues they desire, it would be much more amenable to community members if Wanakee for once became a community for everyone and not just ultra wealthy elites. We would encourage all readers to sign the petition to block this development and prevent it from disgracing historic downtown Wanakee. If the board truly desires to keep the youth in Wanakee, don't approve this building that will make us leave faster. Many other youth I have spoken to have said that they wouldn't return to Wanakee if the T-Wall project is constructed. I don't want to live in a community that does not keep the small-town feel on its Main Street or builds apartments that young people can't afford to live in. Thank you to the planning commission for making the right decision on June 7. I hope the board follows their lead. Please vote no. This is from Paul Hexo. Please add me to the growing list of folks that would like you to follow the planning commission's recommendations to deny the rezoning that Mr. Wall would like on Second Street. Not able to attend the meeting, but would like you to know what my thoughts are. If we allow Mr. Wall to change the character of our faith downtown, we can never get it back. I share the opinion of others who moved here because of the character of Wanakee. Mr. Wall wants to tear down the existing buildings. They must either be in various states of disrepair or he just wants them gone. If the former, instead of granting incentives to Mr. Wall in the form of a Tiff district, why not provide incentives for the current owners of those homes to fix them up? Surely, it would be less expensive in the long run to do this. We don't need additional population density and vehicular traffic in that area. I frequently walk the Main Street downtown corridor, and it is almost impossible to cross during the AM and PM rush hours. Please, please, please deny the request to rezonate the area. Mary Ann Snor, 18 Fairview Trail. Don't turn our beautiful Wanakee home to those who choose a small... home to those who choose a small-town atmosphere. To T-Wall, this is only a profit to be made off its citizen tree. I respectfully, respectfully request that the village board deny the T-Wall rezoning proposal request. Thank you. Jessica Strang. I am a mid-20-year-old who recently bought a home on Second Street in Wanakee. I love the charm of the street, and although it is close to downtown, it is a peaceful, quiet street. After my purchase, I learned of the request to rezone on my street and was a little disappointed. Watching the Wanakee downtown be revitalized has been great and very fun. However, I fear that building too many commercial housing buildings too fast may take away from that charm. With one project just a few blocks away just breaking ground, I would encourage the committee to consider waiting to see how one project goes over before diving into a second building. This message from John and Joe Howard. We are unable to attend the meeting regarding T-Wall rezoning issue. We feel that area should remain residential and not be rezoned for large complexes of apartments. There is already too much traffic in that area, and an apartment complex would just bring more, causing potential traffic concerns, possible accidents. Also, we need to retain the downtown neighborhood, which helps make Wanakee special. Thank you for listening.
Are they residents? They didn't?
Yes, they are. That's how we live in Boston.
I'm just curious. Could you have a space?
Hi, I'm Mark Cleveland at 210 West Second Street. I will be on vacation the week of the vote, but I would like to vote no. I hope that counts. Thank you. Laverne and Carol Stotts, 306 Street. We are opposed to the rest Second Street, 201, 203, 205, 207, 209, 211 rezone from residential to C1D commercial. Chris, I'm sending you this email because I will be in Seattle, Washington at the Special Olympics, which our grand center is representing Wanakee and the Scots, and I request you to count my vote no for the rest Second Street to be rezoned to commercial. Wanakee stands to lose too much history with those streets, Main, Second, Third, and even Fourth Street. I hope the village trustees vote no to T-Wall. Thank you, 53rd and 203 Seventh Street. Renee Kuzak, 207 Doran Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the rezone request by Main Street Wanakee, LLC, T-Wall Enterprises. I strongly encourage you to deny the application for rezoning the south half of the block along West Second Street to C1D because it is inconsistent with the village's comprehensive plan. Please review the MSA Professional Services Incorporated memo dated June 1, 2018 from Jason Valerius, AICP. His recommendation is to deny the application in its current form. Please review the planning commission's recommendation to deny the rezone request as noted on the village board summary sheet dated July 2, 2018. Wanakee is a charming small-town appeal. The T-Wall Enterprises rezone request to build a second-lot, three-story, densely populated structure in the neighborhood of single-family homes does not fit the character of Wanakee. The amount of traffic and parking generated by the density of housing from this project will be detrimental to the adjoining neighborhood. To tear down buildings at 204 West Main Street and replace them with service parking absolutely doesn't... does meet... does meet the comprehensive plan guidelines on the rehabilitation or replacement of storefronts. I'm not sure if that's supposed to mean it does or doesn't. I am not against revitalizing our downtown. I object to the inorgy of this proposed project. At this location, downtown Wanakee needs additional business that not only draw in local residents, but also invite thousands of people that drive through every day to stop. I agree with adding affordable housing, but doing it in a way that blends with the existing neighborhood. A three-story structure does not do that. Please deny the rezone request by Main Street Wanakee, LLC, T-Wall Enterprises. My name is Mary Jo Carpenter. I own and live at 209 West Second Street. I support the T-Wall redevelopment. I have the right to have my property rezoned and redeveloped, just like any, like other properties in the village. I realize people are saying they want to preserve the historic homes on Second Street. If you take a look, there are a number that don't look like they have been able to keep up with the care of their home. I don't think the village has deemed my home historic and have never offered to provide maintenance to keep it in historic condition. I also realize that there are many other points to consider with this development. As a homeowner, I just wanted the village to know of my support. Kathy Lauer, 515 Doran Drive. I am not able to attend the public hearing about the T-Wall rezone request tonight. I would like to see the village of Wanakee follow our comprehensive plan. I feel we should keep West Second Street zoned residential. I've heard from more than a couple people who have had difficulty even trying to turn right onto Main Street at certain times of the day. I've had difficulty trying to cross Main Street one on foot. We do not need to add 100-plus apartments to this mix. Parking and congestion would be more of an issue. Please vote no on the rezoning request from T-Wall. I'm not sure if I'll be able to attend this meeting, the evening's meeting, so I wanted to send my comment beforehand. I live at 217 West Main Street and oppose the rezoning of West Second Street from residential to commercial. Thank you, Monica Escudell. We would like to recommend to the village board to deny the rezoning of Second Street. Let's keep our Main Street the way it is, the friendly look, and not that of big tall buildings that weigh too much traffic. Thank you, Mark and Mark Kauscher. This is from Rita Heimbecker, 306 West Third Street. I would like to express that I am opposed to the rezone request for the Second Street homes, 201, 203, 205, 207, 209, and 211 from R3D to C1D. Thank you for taking the time to read this. Jean Cup, 802 Johns Street. Chris, from what I read in the Tribune, it does not seem like the large development that the T-Wall group wants to build on Main Street really fits. A lot of updating has happened on Main Street, like the Lone Grove area and the new buildings on the north side of the street near Quiktrip. Those areas look pretty nice now, and they draw me to the area with my money. Those areas keep me in town instead of going to Madison, Middleton, or Bernal. Does the village of Wanakee really need to be the place where a developer can make a large sum of money? There has seemed to be a movement that the village needs to adapt to the develop... adapt so the developers can make money. I disagree. I've lived in Wanakee for 20 years. Most of the changes that have occurred have been ones I like. The T-Wall building just does not seem to fit. Nancy Wales, 101 Fifth Street. I am opposed. Since I will not be able to attend the upcoming meeting, I am sending this message to make my feelings known. I could go on and on about all the reasons I am against this project, but that would just be repeating what others have said or will say. At a prior meeting, it was mentioned that this structure would be more appropriate in the Kilkenny development. Completely agree with this suggestion. Ask that the board say no to rezoning, and let's not put any more pressure on Main Street until all the current projects are completed. At that point, an assessment could be done on traffic as well as the need for more commercial This is Tom and Mary Aker. We are not able to attend the July 2 board meeting, but we would like to express our opinions on the T-Wall commercial rezone request for West Second Street. As like one Wanakee residents, we agree with the planning commission's vote to deny the rezone request and strongly encourage the village board to reject the request and follow the no votes. Hi, Chris, I'm opposed for this project to move forward. I truly hope our board votes this down. No, let's move for Terrence Wall to move on to a different project in another town. No, no. Nancy Loffenberg. Mitch Hellenbrand, no, T-Wall rezone. This is Rollo Wells. I would like my voice to be heard, so I am emailing you since I would not be able to make it to the next, to the meeting on Monday. I would like to voice that I want the village board to vote no on the commercializing of West Second Street in Wanakee. First, I truly believe that it would cause more traffic issues. I have kids, and I don't want more traffic. It's already busy enough with 19. Also, creating more places to live will cause an overpopulation to our small village, and lastly, if this is allowing, will allow this corporation to continue to build in our village and allow additional areas to be ruled by them. If anything should be done... if anything should be done, if the houses are old and out of shape, then they need to be rebuilt as houses, not as apartments, condos, or duplexes. This is a village. We shouldn't have big, huge apartment buildings. Please, let's keep this village a village and add it to a city. I love a small town, and I wonder what needs to be done to keep it small. Heather Carpenter. I'm against the T-Wall rezone request. Peggy and John Courier, 415 Skydew Drive. John and I do not want the rezoning approved for the T-Wall development. We do not want another large apartment building on or near Main Street in Wanakee. Traffic is already too congested and dangerous for pedestrians as it is. I was at Main and Madison and had to alert a driver in a large utility-type truck, turning left from Main onto Madison with my car horn of a young boy in his white cross pass... excuse me, Madison Street with the green pedestrian light. And Kevin, he heard me and stopped just in time to prevent a horrific accident. Thank you for alerting the village on this safety hazard at Madison. I may be because sidewalk closed signs are now in place at Madison and Main. Nancy Werho Keller. I oppose the rezone of Main Street and Second Street for the T-Wall development. Elena Drayson. I want to go on record against seeing that I am very much opposed to rezoning West Second Street to commercial zoning. Please vote to keep it residential. Thank you. Hi, Chris, public comments. I'm just letting you know I'm totally against this project going forward on Second Street. My name is Linda Hellenbrand. I have two from Carol Pope. Vote no, we do not need huge buildings on Main Street. Please vote no on the rezoning on West Second Street, numbers 101, 203, 205, 209, 211. We do not need more apartments and development here and on Main Street. I also have two from Florence Hellenbrand, 15 Fairview Trail. No, not rezoned. I do not want T-Wall to put up this large building. It does not belong there at all. We now have a lot of traffic, and it will get worse when the project is done. I am very much against the T-Wall project on Main and Second Street. Please do not rezonate that to happen. Those are all of their thoughts.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mary Ellen Kearney, 317 West Main Street. Would you like to come to the podium, please?
Hi. I'm here to address the comments on history and charm that we want to maintain in Wanakee. I gave the 1871 original plan, maps to all the village board members and the planning commission members. Wanakee is located where it is because of two men, George Fisher and Louis Baker, who got the railroad to come through Wanakee by giving them right-of-way to their farms and paying them some money. And because of that, they planted Wanakee in 1871. There were 12 blocks in the original plan. The West Street was the west end. Madison Street was the east end. The Quirk and the railroad tracks formed the northern boundary, and the south side of Third Street was the southern boundary. And out of those original 12 blocks, the only blocks that were, are completely residential today that remain are the blocks on West Second Street, the 200 block, the 100 block, and the West Third Street, the 100 block and the 200 block. And I think it would be terrible to give away our history for a high-density area building. That's not charm. And several of the oldest buildings in Wanakee are located on those blocks. The first public school, the two earliest churches. St. John's was built in 1874. This is our history, and nobody's doing anything to protect it. Also, talk about the bicycle shop. That was originally a farm implements store, and to tear it down for a parking lot, it's got some beautiful architectural detail. All it needs is cruising up. So, I'm just talking about maintain the historic map. So, that's all I have. I don't want to become anywhere USA.
Thank you.
Kevin Kearney, 210 West Main Street.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Carney. I've been a resident here for 30-plus years. I own a tax practice on Main Street and for about 20 years. I want to cover two things, phase one and phase two. I'm against the zoning today, but I want to talk about the end result of the 200 block of West Main. I've talked about this at the previous meeting. I'm going to need you guys to envision what's happening here. But if this goes through, if you would, in your mind's eye, walk with me and stand in the middle of Main Street now and look at the 200 block of Main Street. On the left, where the bike shop is, that's gone, and you know that's going to be a parking lot, which everybody knows. Just to the right of that is going to be a house, but this is not going to be a normal house, okay? Because this house was not built on a normal lot. This house was built on a half a lot. So, we're going to have approximately a 22-foot-by house that goes up about 35 feet, okay? So, as we walk through this in your mind, the bike shop is gone, we have a parking lot, we have a big old house sticking there up 30, 35 feet. Next to that is going to be an empty lot, then a one-story development, and then we're going to have a three-story behemoth which takes up the rest of the block to the Green Bay Packer House. So, this is just going to be an eyesore for a ton of years, potentially. Okay? So, I wanted to address that. And then my other issue is in phase one there, access. Because I currently have three ways into my building right now. I can go in the alley east, in the alley west, or I can come from Main Street. So, at times, over the 20 years I've been there, I haven't been able to leave my building, okay, my area. The alleys at both ends have been blocked, and the Main Street area has been blocked. So, I'm locked in there, okay? So, and that's with three, three ways to get in and three ways to get out. So, with the footprint that exists there now, let's say there are 50 people that live there, and we're proposing to get up to 100, 200 people there with the vehicles, and then take the ingress and egress from three down to one, I see this as a major, major problem. Because again, at times, I can't get out of there right now with three ways in and out. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Heimbecker, 306 West Third Street.
Hi, Mary Heimbecker, 306 West Third. I'm opposed to rezoning Second Street houses from R3 to C1D. There are many reasons to make a meeting tonight from our There are many reasons to make a move tonight from our comprehensive plan that is, should not be allowed. One is that these homes are starter homes, which the village is greatly in need of. Starter homes are, and the need for them is listed in our comprehensive plan. And how comprehensive plans, that's keeping the residential areas and special district intact, a rezon from C1 to C1D from R3 would set Second Street up for any type of commercial business to go into those homes that are there now. The addition of another two-hundred fifty to three-hundred cars in the neighborhood would greatly affect the ability to safely walk, ride bike, or send children out to play. I can only imagine that all those cars coming into the residential neighborhood and looking for a way to get into Madison, especially if the left turn would be necessary onto Main Street. Already trying to cross Main Street in this area, the pedestrian is difficult at best. Tried to cross at O'Malley and Main Street, and the clearly marked crosswalk is extremely difficult. Cars just do not stop coming out of the roundabout at that point. I do appreciate you guys putting up those other signs. They seem to have helped a little bit with pedestrian crossing, but there's still much issues with pedestrian crossing on Main Street. I also believe that there needs to be a bigger picture of how many districts are flowing into our schools. Heritage is in need of adding a new kindergarten feature this fall. I think that the study needs to happen of all the buildings taking place that is flowing students into our district and how it is affecting the taxpayers that are actually paying taxes right now. If this is built, it's a tip-in, that money would stay in that district and would not flow to our schools or our police or our other public services. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Mary Murphy, 213 Main Street. Hello, I'm Mary Murphy. My own property at 205 West Second Street, and I rent out. I support T-Wall redevelopment and I have the right to have my property rezoned, redeveloped like other properties in the village. As far as the, um, people on our block that, you know, the small little shops getting protected, I have room at my mill. We have owned that mill for twenty-five years. It's historic. My husband's put a lot of work into it. If you want something historic, you want to rent it out, I got space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Jo Bell, 309 West Third Street. Hi, I'm opposed to the T-Wall development. Fish and West Streets were designed not for heavy traffic. They're narrow, they're thirty-six feet. Per engineer, we were told that it doesn't allow for changes in geometry, so that can't change. The traffic definitely, which everyone's talked about, anyone that lives in that area that tries to walk has an issue. There's two daycares there. My understanding with the T-Wall complex, there's basically one way out. So, the majority of the building, the tenants are going to be between twenty to sixty, is the target range. So, I'm assuming that a lot of those people will be leaving around rush hour time period, which is when kids are going to school, to the high school, which means their experienced drivers try to turn on Main Street, which everyone that lives there or tries to turn in that area knows that that's an issue. Century Avenue is an issue. Planning Commission has this going against it. Please listen to what the Planning Commission has to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt LeFroy, 404 East River Avenue. Hi, I just wanted to make the comment that it isn't just the Main Street traffic and that local neighborhood traffic that would be affected. I think every area in Wannakee, whether you're on Berlin Street from traffic coming up Division or down the other end of Division, or no matter where you live, traffic would be affected because people are not going to fight trying to get through that roundabout into Main Street if they can find a cut through. I, I was in Eau Claire this past weekend and I talked to a young person who had, who's thirty-seven years old, who has, is a business owner. And I asked him, what's your Main Street like? Do you have old buildings for me to go look at or, you know, what's there? He said, basically, everything's been torn down. And I had to tell my wife when we decided to move to Eau Claire that, basically, Eau Claire has lost its character because it's been rebuilt. And I just wanted to let people know that.
Thank you.
Michael Moore, 923 Lexington Avenue. Thanks for taking comments. I'd just like to point out that Brian did a good job trying to correct Mr. Wall. He was going with the 2003 plan because if he had used our comprehensive plan in 2017, he would have only got six chapters and he was going with chapter eight. I strongly support the Plan Commission's recommendation to deny the request for the zoning changes on the Second Street parcels because they're inconsistent with our ordinances and our 2017 comprehensive plan. The request is inconsistent with our zoning ordinances in several ways. First, the intent of C1D is to create a special district for commercial use in the older portion of the downtown in order to retain a mixture of business use. This is not the stated intent of the land use on Second Street by the applicant, nor is residential be permitted use under C1D. Second, the structure proposed along Second Street is high-density residential development that is accessible to thoroughfare, shopping, and employment. This is the stated intent of R5, multi-family zoning for our ordinance, also not C1D. Third, the Second Street parcels are at the edge of one- and two-family residential neighborhood. Our ordinance specifies R4 as the appropriate zoning for denser multi-family residential units in this type of location. The applicant intends to build an R5 building, then it cannot be located on Second Street. This applicant is requesting C1D zoning to build an R5 structure in an area that is appropriate for R4 at most and for a use that is not permitted in C1D. The request is not aligned with our ordinances at all. It's also inconsistent with our desired future uses in our comp plan. These lots are designated for main community residential and not commercial or business district. While the plan allows for redevelopment in the commercial downtown district, these properties fall outside our designated commercial areas. The plan addresses transitioning properties from residential to commercial, but specifically references residential properties with direct frontage on Main Street. It acknowledges existing properties that are already zoned C1D without direct frontage on Main Street and highlights those areas for redevelopment for non-commercial uses, such as multi-family housing. Nor does it indicate that the properties adjacent to commercial district, that are currently zoned residential, will be rezoned to C1D for purposes of redevelopment. In principle, this rezon would be a dramatic shift in the boundary of our core commercial area, expanding it into quiet immigrant streets with low-density single and two-family homes. This applicant has argued that homes are in need of significant repair and therefore should be demolished. This reason does not alone justify rezoning commercial. If this argument is accepted, it will allow property owners who desire to windfall by the rise of being zoned commercial, to allow their properties to fall into disuse and disrepair. It will encourage landlords to buy properties adjacent to central business district and let them fall into disrepair. We should not create an incentive by accepting this argument from this applicant. It will lead to the deterioration of residential areas around the commercial downtown and Commercial Creek will continue south if this is allowed to take over. This rezoning is simply not compatible with our comp plan and zoning ordinances and therefore should be denied as suggested by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks.
Michael Schaefer, 201 West Second Street. Michael Schaefer, 201 West Second Street. I support the T-Wall improvement for redevelopment. As a property owner, it's my right to rezon, redevelop my property, just as anyone else in the village can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne Wagner, 207, 211 Second Street.
I own the property at 207, 211 Second Street. I'm in favor of Key Wall. I talked to a couple of people there that they were neighbors. I never talked to them before. And their thing was, you know, we want this big thing, you know, up in there. I said, I understand, a four-wall, straight up. He redesigned it. And one guy goes, yeah, I kind of seen that, I kind of liked it. You know, so, I mean, he did some work in Middleton. I think it would be a facelift for Second Street. Going down Second Street, look at those six houses. Check out the longer street, the worst-looking houses are those six houses. So, like I said, I'm in favor of a rezon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caleb Hatwell, 206 West Second Street.
David, thank you guys all for taking the time to have the meeting and take the abundance of public comments. One of the items that was in your packet was a petition that was circulated by neighbors. You would see that there were all but two adjacent properties that had signed that petition. One of them was 210. He had submitted a comment that Julie Rep that was against this rezon. The other was my residence at 206. There were a few items within that petition that I personally didn't agree with how it was proposed, but I would like to make it perfectly clear that I am also against the rezoning. I don't feel that a commercial rezon fits within the character of that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Kearney, 204 North Third Road Drive.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to make some comments. I'm a lifelong resident of Wannakee, and I just wanted to let you know that I agree and support the Plan Commission's decision to recommend to the village board that you deny T-Wall requests to rezon the two-hundred block of West Second Street. I think in reaching this decision, the Plan Commission really did a couple of things. I think they acted consistently with the comprehensive plan. You know, one of the things that you see in that comprehensive plan is a map of the downtown area. And C1D zoning runs all along the Main Street corridor. You get to Second Street and it's pretty clear that that's part of an area that's zoned as residential. And so, I think when you start talking about consistencies or inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan, I think that map is probably pretty telling in terms of what the intent was when that comprehensive plan was put together. So, I think that's an important map to take a look at. So, I think they, they acted consistently with the comprehensive plan, and I think they really reconfirmed the intent. And that was that Second Street was intended to remain zoned as R3D, that it was intended to be residential, and that it was the Main Street corridor that was really designed to be C1D commercial. And so, I think we're really, I think when you think about, I think it was at the Kilkenny Fisher meeting, people made the comment that you can kind of pick and choose different parts of the comprehensive plan in terms of whether it needs or it doesn't need. But I think you need to take a step back. Who better to know what the intent was of our, of our comprehensive plan than our village trustees and our community members that were involved in pulling that together? So, just in closing, I encourage our village board to uphold the Plan Commission's decision to recommend to deny the rezon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Nice, 304 West Main Street.
Thanks a lot for letting me come to speak to you guys tonight. I guess the first question maybe I'm going to ask, and this is, I don't expect an answer, but what are we all going to talk about tonight? Did anybody see the Wannakee Tribune this last Thursday, where a front-page article, "Developer in Wannakee Honored Nationally"? I almost fell off my chair thinking this, this was going to be in reference to T-Wall. But, I thought better of it after reading it. The very last line, the very last sentence in the article lines up the criteria or explains the criteria for winning this award. And it says, "And support of the local community." Now, to me, you can find, you can hear, you've heard how much support there is from the local community. Very, very lit. Mr. Wall, I think, is probably thinking, he's pretty smart, because he thinks he's probably found some loopholes in the comprehensive plans that he's looked at. It's much like some major corporate business owners, their tax departments, who seem to think that they've found loopholes in the IRS tax law, and there's ways to skirt the law. It's legal, of course, but is it right? Is it ethical? Does it follow the spirit? I think that's what needs to be considered. Certainly, it can be legal, but again, is it right? I'm opposed to the plan for all sorts of reasons that you're going to be hearing here I think we need to step back and actually consider the big picture of where this is, where this is going to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary McElk, 203 West Second Street. My husband, Michael, is here with me today. And both Mike and I, who've owned and lived at the property of 203 West Second Street for approximately thirty years, I mean, Wannakee for at least thirty-five years, for close to thirty-five years. We support the T-Wall redevelopment property, and we have a right to have our property rezoned and redeveloped, just like other properties in the village. In the past meetings, residents of the community have brought up the topic of the village comprehensive plan, having stated that to preserve the historical residential properties, they will help out individuals or their plants. I talked to Kevin Eden from the village. I sat down with him and I asked him, what plan? What plans does the village have to help these people out in order to preserve their historic homes? There is no plan. There are no projects. As long as it takes this village to decide on things, by the time I'm ready to die, will not be soon enough before they have something to come up. If anybody, if this rezoning doesn't go through for us, I'd like to know who in this room, either privately or as a, as a village, who is going to give me a grant to redevelop, to fix up my property to the correct standards? Or who is going to buy my property at the proposal that I received from Mr. Wall? My property is considered by many citizens in this town as being affordable housing. By the time I put the money into my property to get it up to par, to sell for somebody else to live in, I will never get back the monies that I have put into it. So, therefore, my property would not be affordable housing. It would be right up there with all the rest of the high-priced homes in Wannakee. So, which one of you wants to take on that challenge and dump your money into something that you will not get any money out of? I love older homes. I love historic districts. But let's find out what it takes to make something historical in this state. My house does not meet those requirements. My house does not meet those requirements. So, last thing I want to say is I found it very interesting that the library now will, most likely, be passed without following procedure of the community. That's such leniency for a project this big that has things in it that are absolutely ridiculously costly, multiple fireplaces. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous. But there's been very strict following with the T-Wall project. And I believe there's much prejudice in this town against that. That is my own personal opinion. You don't have to like the man, but you have to listen to what it supposedly is. And you have to also be realistic about these properties that are being spoken about on West Second Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, 205 West Second Street.
I've lived here my whole life. I've seen this town change. And people keep talking about small town appeal. It was gone 20 years ago when we started building, upciting on all these other suburbs, divisions. I think the T-Wall project would be good. I think it would be good for the downtown. It'll look nice. The proposal, Second Street side, it's going to look nice. I think we have to look at it and would you rather have houses that are ugly or light on the street? Or do you want T-Wall project that looks nice? A lot of people own my houses, can't afford to fix them up. I live on one of those houses. And my question was going to take to restore this house, to remodel it. I remodel houses for a living. And I don't have $200,000 to put in this house. When it's all said and done, sell the house, it's going to have a market for almost $400,000. Who can afford that? Anyone in here? Anyone? My approval of the T-Wall project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernard Van Alstey, 202 East Third Street.
Yeah. I've lived here 61 years, same place, 202 East Third Street. Ever since Third Street got blocked off by the church, Second Street has been nothing but a racetrack. They come down, they come up Short Street, right on Third Street. It's the only way possible to get from Highway Q to Quikrill or Division Street unless you go all the way down by, I believe, by the old grade school. You can cut back to there. So the traffic that comes through, that now you're talking to a church, talking to a school, you're talking residential area, it's nothing but a racetrack. They just go right through there. Most of the people don't even stop at the stop signs. The other thing is, these people keep talking about the beauty or the unbeauty of these houses down there. Nobody's helped me or my house. I got to do it by my own house. They should be doing it for theirs unless you have rental property that you don't care about. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Folks, if you could...
I would appreciate, folks, there's people on both sides of this issue, and I don't think it's right for you to be clapping against those. Everybody should be entitled to their comments, but please hold your comments or hold your clapping, please.
Thank you.
Colleen Wester, 204 West Third Street.
I've spoken a few times already about the preservation and rehabilitation possibilities for these homes in this proposed development. And once again, I wanted to remind the board of the fact that the 2017 comprehensive plan does state that I have a goal to maintain the existing affordable housing stock through rehabilitation and preservation. And this is not something that just kind of just came up. This was also part of the 2003 Central Business District Plan. And I recently reviewed that plan. And I was going through it, and I was so proud of all of the things that have been accomplished from 15 years ago. The Canary Road developments, the street improvements on Main Street, the safety improvements, the business improvements. So we should all be very proud of how much of that plan has been accomplished. And so, most of that plan, those plans have been checked off, completed. But the part about rehabilitating or helping the residents living on the south side of Main Street to rehabilitate or preserve their homes has not happened. And I hope that we don't just cross that off the list by rezoning this as commercial and that we preserve the character, charm, and history of Wanakee through investigating more possibilities than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Malley, 49th Avenue.
My name is Pat Malley. I'm a proud resident of Wanakee, and I have been for 58 years. I take a lot of pride in Wanakee. I get around Wanakee. I walk around. I bike. I do everything in Wanakee if I can. And I own the Packer House at 260 West Main Street. And I love it. I don't really want to sell it. And I'm all about having some history and preserving it. And, but this project that T-Wall has presented is, that's what he's trying to accomplish. He's trying to add to the history of Wanakee. He's trying to get a blighted area out of there on Second Street. That's what he's trying to do. I don't understand all the pushback. This, this whole project needs to take a little imagination for everyone. I mean, new and improved beats old, tired, worn out every day of the week. I don't, I just don't understand it. Traffic is a problem. I understand, I totally understand that. Traffic in Wanakee is a challenge. But to signal out this guy that he wants to do something terrible is, it's insane. There's plenty of buildings in Wanakee that are already built that have, you know, multiple units in them. There's 74 over here. There's, over on O'Malley Street, there's units. 70 something, I don't know if there's 70, but there's at least 50 over there. And Madison and Main, if you take a cross section, if you draw a line from one to the other, it lands right on this property. It's centered right in there. I don't understand all the pushback. This guy's trying to do something good for the village, and everybody's beating him down. I don't, I just, I just can't believe that everyone's using a comprehensive plan that if you look up the actual word comprehensive, it means inclusive. That means everybody. Everybody that lives here. This isn't, this place isn't, isn't going to single people out. You don't have to be 55. You can be, as long as you can pay the rent, you can, you can live here. This is, this is a good project that everyone's like, it's just afraid to progress. And that's, that's what I'm getting out of this. You know, I've listened to so much, and I've kept quiet about it because I really, it's just, it's just too much, like, small town. I mean, I grew up in this small town. I used to hit every house when I went trick or treating. Everyone. And we'd wait around until, you know, they turned their lights off, and we'd probably hit them again, I don't know. But if they did, we'd turn their sprinkler off, you know? But, and as far as saving the street, Second Street's owned by everybody in the village here. It's not just the people that live there, you know? And as far as the traffic goes, when's the last time you saw a cop down on Main Street directing some traffic at Russia? Those are, those are things that need to be addressed, and they need to be addressed by the police department, you know? His main objective is not to destroy Wanakee. He's putting billions of dollars into this. And everybody has a right to their opinion. And you probably have heard enough of mine, so, and please save your applause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go Pat, go. I'll turn it into a bear house.
My dick is going to fly.
Sorry. So, I'd like to address a couple of things. First of all, I've lived actually in one of the most expensive housing markets in the country, in the San Francisco Bay Area. And my first apartment there was $600 a month. So, I have trouble feeling like an apartment building coming in charging $900 a month is super affordable. On page 34 of the 2017 comprehensive plan, we identify a unit goal of renter to owner-occupied housing. And this does not talk about multifamily versus single family. It doesn't single anybody out. But it says that we want to maintain 75% of the units in the village being owner-occupied. And my understanding is, we're very close to that even with specifying multifamily versus single family. So, I'm not entirely sure that this project at this time is the right project to support that goal. Additionally, I'm really struggling with, while I agree with most of the experts' decisions and I'm understanding, I was a little taken aback when I read that packet, and it talked about community residential, because that's what the street is now. And what he's asking for, what T-Wall is asking for, is a move into a central business district, commercial zoning. It's not keeping it in community residential. So, from page 78 of the comprehensive plan, it talks about discouraging rezonings that would not, that would permit uses that are not in the character of the predominantly retail character of downtown. It also talks about protecting transition blocks that are 50% residential. This is 100% residential at this point. And it says, we will allow those uses to change, okay. But then, we are limiting that to the permitted uses within the C1D. And that we would require the lots and green space to still be there. In addition, it talks about new residential uses on Main Street, disallowing single-family uses on the first floor and contributing to the core district. And what I understand is people have a right to work within their zoning and move forward with that. But I guess as part of the site plan that along Main Street is you heard two proposals. One includes commercial space that's completely separate from the purpose of the development. And you do not, you also heard a proposal, part two, my understanding, that does not have a specific carve-out for additional commercial space. All of those spaces are ancillary to primarily residential purposes of this building. And what you need to answer is, is that appropriate? Thank you.
Thank you.
Asia Yeo, 102 West Third Street.
So first, I gave a couple copies of, I had gotten a report from the Wanakee Police Department on the specific intersections on Main Street. And I just wanted to share how many accidents have occurred on those streets. Because I think it talks to what is on the streets and what the current state of traffic problems are. So, as you know, South Street has preschools, has a library, has a daycare, and also has a church, and there are large parking lots. And in, so the accident report is from 2016 to 2018. And there were six accidents with injuries that occurred during those years on South Street. And you would maybe expect that from such a street that has so much, so many businesses and commercial uses. And on Main and West, it also had six. And when I walk West Street, it has a lot of blind spots, has a lot of blind intersections. It's also very narrow. Those streets, West and Fitch, are only 37 feet wide. All the new streets that are being built in Wanakee are much wider than that. So if you have cars parked there for businesses because they don't have enough parking, or you have this enormous density of apartments, people are parking on the street, even though he claims that there'll be enough parking, he did not prove that when he was talking to us today, that people will be parking on the streets, which makes more blind spots, which makes it more dangerous. The other thing that I want to point out is, I tried to look through the comprehensive plan as he was talking, and, he does not, everything that he was quoting, most of it, came from the C1D zoning. It was the commercial residency. And he didn't really, from what I could tell, be quoting from the commercial use. And therefore, I don't think that he proved that what he needs is that commercial zoning when everything that he was quoting was coming out of the residential area of our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's the last one.
Okay, did we miss anybody? Did anybody turn a foreman that didn't get called? One more? Place? Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing at this moment. If I need to give any comments, let me get out of the boat.
Sure. You were right, there were a lot of comments. So I'm going to try to bring you guys back from the standpoint of, you know, we've heard some comments, both by Mr. Wall and by some individual, other individuals who spoke. We have a state law that required us to adopt a comprehensive plan, which we've done. And then what that state law says is, any time that we make any amendments to certain ordinances, zoning ordinances being a little bit, that we need to do that consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I'm just going to read for you, you know, essentially, a lot of those lines. This is from page 68 of the comprehensive plan within chapter five, which is the land use section, which is really the one that we're talking about. It says, "This map," referencing the future land use map, which is that. "This map and the corresponding texts are to be consulted whenever development is proposed, especially when zoning change or land division is requested. Zoning changes in development should be consistent with the use categories shown on the map and the corresponding text." So here, what we have is, the land on West Second Street within the future land use map is designated community residential. It's yellow. And so, when you look at Jason Valerius's mental, which the plan commission had, and it starts on page 67 of your packet, he acknowledges that the request for the rezone is to, is associated with land that is community residential. the rezone is to, is associated with land that is community residential. And Mr. Wall did quote a, a portion of Jason's memo during his presentation. I also want to, and, and, and he quoted it in response to what is, when, when you go to the comprehensive plan, there is a section that specifically deals with community residential. And it's got one paragraph that says, number seven, "New residential developments that are joining existing neighborhoods should include housing that is compatible with adjoining established neighborhoods on portions of the development parcel adjoining these existing neighborhoods." And that was actually the sec, the section of the comprehensive plan that Jason said the rezoning request was inconsistent with that section. And I just wanna read to you what he said, he did it in two different parts. "The proposal would replace six residential units with eighty-one units along the south half of the block resulting in a significant change in overall development." And then you got a couple of sentences that Mr. Wall read. And then he concluded that section saying, "The primary concern and planned incompatibility is the requested zoning designation, C-1D." And that's the rezoning request we have today, to go from R-3D to C-1D. The plan identifies the south half of the block for residential use. In other words, that's West Second Street. And while that is the use that is proposed at this time, C-1D is explicitly a commercial district intended primarily for commercial uses. So within the C-1D zoning district, you have two, essentially two ways to have residential zoning. You can have commercial on the first floor of a structure in the C-1D zoning district, and then you can have residential on the upper floors. That would be the housing development, which is, you know, matter of fact, like in a different district for purposes of land, of land use map. The other is you can get a conditional use permit to allow residential zoning on the first floor within the C-1D. But as, as Jason concluded, he says, "As such, it would be inconsistent with the plan to approve rezoning for C-1D with the intended use is apparently residential on West Second Street." Which then begs the question, if the intended use on West Second Street is residential, why then would you rezone it to a commercial zoning district? Its use per the land use map would be residential, so a residential zoning classification is what is appropriate for this land unless we change the land use map. And, and that's really what Jason concluded. He said, "His recommendation of the Plan Commission and also the Village Board is to deny the application in its current form. Most relevant to this recommendation, one of the findings is the requested C-1D zoning is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan." That's what the Plan Commission found. The Plan Commission found based on Jason's memo, other comments made by staff, other comments made during the public hearing, that the rezoning request was to, to C-1D was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan based on the information in Jason's memo. And I, that is still the village staff's recommendation, is to deny the rezoning request based on how Jason laid it out. I will say that we did have a presentation by Mr. Wall, and I do believe that you, that I think you have these three pages in front of you that were part of a packet that he provided. I, I do think though that I need to let you know that a lot of the information that he cites within this chapter eight is actually found within the community residential section within chapter five. So, in other words, notwithstanding the fact that this, this information here is quoting an older land use plan, or I'm sorry, older comprehensive plan, when you look at our current comprehensive plan as it identifies ten specific goals for community residential, there is carryover. So some of what he had said would carryover to this, but as I said at the Plan Commission meeting, the comprehensive plan is enlarged out. You can definitely go through the comprehensive plan and find language within the plan that would suggest that this rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I think the flip side of that is you can definitely find information within the comprehensive plan that suggests that the rezoning request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's what Jason has concluded, that's his recommendation. I think it's significant that Jason assisted the village in preparation of the comprehensive plan, and our position would be that in fact, the rezoning request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and that's the basis for our recommendation to deny the request.
Any other staff comments before we?
I just wanna add one, one thought here.
Ed, you wanna tell everybody?
If you're also one of the planners of the village. It was interesting to hear you all speak of this proposed project. The comp plan took, what, two years? More or less, with lots of public input. So what you see in front of you is really the results of your campaign. It's unfortunate that a lot of the references were the older document, it makes it a little more complicated to have a civil conversation. But I want you, and then I, I think there is some really compelling wonderful testimony about fulfilling some of the future needs of Wannakee. So what I really want you to think about is that this comp plan represents two years of public input. A lot of technical thought, a lot of planning, and a lot of elements that decide what influence land use. So I don't think tonight's decision should be looked at as whether or not the project is good for Wannakee right now. Obviously growth is good, obviously affordable housing is good. So the things that are questionable are, is it in the right place? So if you look at your comp plan, you can achieve everything that was proposed tonight in the existing comp plan. What's being proposed tonight is, we don't wanna put it in the area that's appropriately zoned, we wanna rezone and put this project in it. So I don't understand why there's such a concern about whether it should happen or not. The bigger question is, is it being proposed in the right place? And according to the comp plan, which is crafted about this community, it's not in the right place. But I'll leave that to you.
Kevin or Todd, any comments from you?
Seven, seven, yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to my board members. Do you want to make any comments? And I'm just gonna randomly do this, so don't think I'm trying to plant anything here, folks, or manipulate. Phil?
Thanks for letting me go first. Only a resident of Wannakee for since seventy-five, so I'm not too knowledgeable on some things. I stated some time ago that I wanted to see us fill out what we're building right now on Main Street, take a breath, see how it works. I think there may be room for more multiple-family housing in Wannakee, but in another area. I'd like to see some of it out on the edge, like in some other towns. I think right now we're getting a little dense downtown. We need to take a breath before we do anything else down there and before we go to jail for changing the plans.
Hello. Thank you everyone for being here. It's important that our community's engaged and I'm thankful that we've allowed public input in this. Kind of going off what Phil said, I've only been a resident of Wannakee since ninety-seven when I was born, but, um, I agree, I think maybe, you know, taking a breath, we've had a lot of change in my lifetime in the past ten years, in the past five years, and seeing where we are, seeing what we can handle and what works good, what works well in this community. Obviously the people in this room and the people that come here tonight really care about Wannakee and that's one reason it's so great, we all love to be here. So maybe figuring out how we can maintain that in the future, whether this is a different reason.
Thank you. Bill?
How often is the comp plan done? How often do they reach the vote?
Anywhere, anywhere is between five and ten years. There's state, there's state statutes that encourage it for five to six years, and that's also affects public funding and a number of other things. But typically, an average, it's five years.
I guess I pretty much endorse the plan. It seems to be something that's created, or began to play, if they do so, state podcasts and that, simply something like a cat.
Yeah, comprehensive. We don't care. We don't care. We don't care.
Fat room. I guess I'm mostly endorsing that the previous plans that we've already, that the community's endorsed in the past, obviously there's a lot of endorsement occurring in the room right now.
Joe?
I'll start by saying that, really I echo what, what Phil has said, really what's been said all the way down the line here. There's kind of three things here that concern me. First thing is the mismatch with our comp plan. You know, it's pretty obvious that we're looking at a residential area there, that means, and the second thing, which is C-1D is, at best, a conditional use for residential. So if we're really talking what should happen here, it should probably be, I don't know, R-5 or something in that realm. And then the third thing I just wanna speak of is, I've never seen this sort of turnout for anything in, in a, you know, any sort of local issue. And if there's one thing that everyone takes away, be it whether you are in support of this or not in support of this, we're listening, we're, we're hearing what you have to say, and, and we thank you for coming out.
Thank you. So I, I probably have a few more comments than everybody else. Can everybody hear me in the back? Everybody good? Okay. 'Cause I can't really tell. I don't have one of those earpieces, let me know what you guys hear. So, I didn't know Mr. Wall before this project. I did rent two different office buildings from him, but we didn't know each other. And I would say he had a very, very good quality product in both of the places I was in, and we were treated fairly. Some of the comments about that the city, city seems to be against Mr. Wall, I'm, I'm not sure if that's the truth in the matter. I think he wants to do well. I think what he's done is, is modify his plan. But I'll go back to the very beginning, when it was first proposed to me, and I didn't like the project. I stated it publicly, publicly. I'm not, I'm, I'm opposed to rezoning the property. I hear the people that want to sell their properties, I understand your situation. Everybody would want a situation where they're gonna get paid more than what their value is, of the value of their home. There's nobody that's gonna be opposed to that. Just like I don't think there's anybody in the room that's opposed to their home going up in value for when they wanna resell it. Most people want that to happen. They don't want it to go down. I think there's gonna be a healing process that goes, I don't know how the board's gonna vote right now, but I think there's a healing process that needs to go on in our community about this particular issue, and that's the thing that's disturbing to me. Mr. Wall was not really given a fair treatment, in my opinion, by all the residents. But I also think he could've done some things differently with those residents. The residents that want to sell, those who don't want them to sell, okay? They may need some help. The Wannakee way that I've always grown up with is help your neighbor, do things to assist them. Some people have the ability, some people don't, and when they don't, that's where we I'm very disappointed when I hear people talk about our, our youth, when they were reading, when Julie was reading about the youth, when I hear that only the elites are here in Wannakee for the housing. People want to live in Wannakee. Mrs. Webster brought up many things that happened over the last fifteen years that our community is very proud of, very proud of. Were all of them cheap? Inexpensive? Comments about the library, not going to referendum? The process? I tell everybody, because most people don't know it, Highway Q, which was just redone, was six and a half million dollars. That road's gonna need to be replaced in probably fifteen to twenty years. So it's about half the cost of what the library is. That library's gonna be here for fifty plus, up to a hundred years, and we wanted to make sure we built it the right way. Now I know that has nothing to do with this rezone whatsoever, but I think it's important for people to understand, Ed's comments were the most appropriate ones, I thought, tonight with regards to this, when you look at this. This is about, is this the right place for this and the right spot to rezone? And I agree that it's not. So I'm gonna make the motion to deny the rezone.
So, I would, the only question I have for you, Chris, before there's a second, is that, to the extent that you agree with the recommendation from village staff and from the Plan Commission, I would, I would add to that motion to recommend denial of the rezone based on its inconsistency with the comprehensive plan, if that is what the village board believes, because I think it is important.
That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm not sure who that was, so I'm gonna say, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, second by Erin. Any other comments? Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this for everybody. Julie?
Joseph Selsberg?
Aye.
Phil Lowes?
Aye.
Chris Allen?
Aye.
Bill Rand?
Aye.
Aaron Rand?
Aye.
Two absent.
Okay, thank you. One last motion.
We'll make a motion.
Just, just one question, I guess, from the staff. When the, the Plan Commission Act, it actually made an additional motion to give you all the information, I just wanna re-put that motion, is you do not have to make a similar motion, but if you want to, you certainly have the ability to do so. What they, the motion they made was to let the village board know that any further proposals from the applicant would need to be compliant with the comprehensive plan as it exists today. And so, I, the reason why the, the Plan Commission made that motion is, it wanted to give guidance not only to the applicants, but also to the public on where the Plan Commission stood, because theoretically, one next step here would be, although I don't, from the comments of the people that I've billed that I've heard, you know, there is in theory, the comprehensive plan could be amended to allow for a development on West Second Street that would be consistent with the project. And if that's something that, you know, you wanna avoid from a staff time, and quite frankly, to, you know, to save people money, if, if, if you're inclined to make a motion similar to the Plan Commission, you certainly have the opportunity to do that.
Board members, does anybody have, wanna make that motion?
Oh, so well, I, um, motion that any further proposals from the applicant would need to be compliant with the comprehensive plan as it exists today.
Motion by Bill Rand, second by Joseph Selsberg. Any other comments about this? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote on this as well, please.
Aaron Rand?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Joseph?
Aye.
Phil Lowes?
Aye.
Joseph Selsberg?
Aye.
Motion carried.
One more motion.
I move, we adjourn.
Second by Bill Rand. False question, we'll go to the staff.